Basically see a PhD type of fact that describes in criminology terms why alcohol lowers inhibitions, impairs judgment, and it takes this, what they call soft targets, or the potential victims in this setting, it makes them basically softer predatory criminals who like to pre and folks like that. In fact, one example would be in Daytona Beach where basically people were applied with alcohol and then basically they're more or less robbed in the form of going into a lap dance room and all of a sudden you owe 300 bucks and if you don't pay it, Billy, the boxer's gonna beat you to pulp and throw you down alley. I mean, 33 sworn affidavits to that effect at one establishment. It's not say that it happens every time in every establishment, but it's sort of a on-the-ground example of what Dr. McClear is talking about in this example. On the next slide was a case we argued for Knox County, Tennessee, who said the alcohol prohibition is a reasonable restriction, it's the most narrowly tailored way to address the secondary effects that flow from the combination of these two elements. And then if we go to the next slide, it basically goes into some of the licensing, the conduct regs, just so that you know, when the DeKalb County ordinance that's defective in a number of ways, that's on the books now, Brookhaven was adopted, this case hadn't come out yet, City of Arlington versus EJ Kids, it's a case we briefed at the Supreme Court, which resulted in a nine to zero decision that talked about the procedures for how to regulate these establishments constitutionally, and that's the procedure we're following, that's set. Next slide is some more recent cases, all of which, four, five, and six, we've been involved with, that upheld sort of the comprehensive type of regulation, that's why that's in the draft ordinance, under consideration tonight. And then if we can go to the next slide, yeah, we can skip through those, but the Floyd County, Georgia case, or 2008, upheld similar ordinance here in the federal court. And then, and I think this sort of summarizes some of the larger studies, and it basically tells you, the studies deal with different things, and they look at the problem from different angles, but there's sort of a common denominator, a thread that runs so true, so to speak, and that is that cities have a substantial interest to regulate, to bring these types of secondary effects. And then next, there's some more recent stuff that is not scientific, it's not PhD quality, it's not criminology, and the courts, in which in these cases have relied on these types of evidence via media, that has documented negative secondary effects to uphold similar regulations. Most recently, regulations that we litigated in Illinois against the Metro company in Metropolis, that we already upheld, a similar ordinance based on these types of secondary effects in connection. And then, the expert findings, there's a number of different expert reports, I might have a lawyer lead or leave these, or criminology talk, but basically, these are the findings. You have a wide variety of data sources over many years, but the finding of secondary effects is scientifically robust. You don't have to prove it in the local page, you don't have to prove it in a particular city or a particular establishment, that's what Renton says, and the courts have been faithful in following that, but they do say, first of all, how these studies across the board help support these secondary effects, and why industry-funded studies often fail to capture the data that most relevantly measures the negative secondary effects of doing these targets. And then the last slide, you can skip through these last two, because they're ordinances, they're basically cases that reject industry challenges. All the legislative material that was provided before the December 6 meeting, and then at the December 22 meeting, was provided to Ms. Lemos as the interim city clerk. I've provided a supplemental copy of those materials tonight, and those will be made a part of the minutes for tonight's meeting. And with that, I'm open for questions, but I appreciate the opportunity to run through this at a little bit quicker pace, to lay a proper record for the record.
That we have seen shows for years.
That's right, yeah, oh yeah, you've had it for seven weeks. Thank you.
What's to, the ordinance that is proposed that we adopt, does it regulate the sale of alcohol, or prohibits the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises?
It does.
Does it prohibit the consumption of alcohol on premises?
Yes.
And the sale?
That's right, that's right.
So then you can't bring in their own like you can in some places you don't have?
It's not BYOB, it's just like what is on the books right now in Brookhaven, from DeKalb County, section 15 dash 402-0, which says, no person shall abuse, possess, consume alcohol on premises of an adult or underage. So, the substantive provision in this ordinance is same saying.
What about a instance where you had strip club with a bar adjacent to it, or adjoining, or?
Well, it defines premises, and includes the, all the apartments, the parking lot, things like that, so it's a broad definition of premises. It's not as restrictive as we possibly could be, in two respects, number one, it implements that prohibition beginning January 2, 2014, number two, it also doesn't do what Daytona Beach did, and it was upheld in the Daytona Grant case, where basically a business was trying to bifurcate and separate by a wall, and have the liquor establishment over here and then have the strip club over here, and the city didn't have a definition of premises like this does, but what they did was adopt a rule that said you could have no adult-oriented establishment within 500 feet of any establishment where liquor is sold on premises. So this doesn't go that far, but that would be constitutionally inclusive.
Help me understand, as I think through this, if we have had in the past, existing ordinance, where the DeKalb County ordinance, as you mentioned, is relatively similar, it's just that the new ordinance we're proposing to adopt is more constitutionally solid.
That's right.
And so in the past, DeKalb County ordinance, we have had the existence of a sexually-oriented business in Brookhaven, existing in a non-performing status, and that has occurred, and now we have what you said is a similar ordinance that we would be adopting, and what would preclude the grandfathering of our, the same sexual-oriented business business that existed in DeKalb County previous to Brookhaven?
I think I follow all that, and the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment to the US Constitution would prevent that, because essentially, what happens is a new place comes in, on Beaufort Highway, on Peachtree, we talked at length about why zoning option is not a good option because of the way that Brookhaven is built out, I provided you color maps of what would even a 500-foot buckler would basically be a zone out, so being able to control the location of sexual-oriented businesses to zone is a real kind of losing proposition for the city. So the new business comes in, and they say, we want the same deal that that one has, and you say, well, you can't because, why? Well, because we're favoring this one, and we're allowing you to continue to flout the laws that are on the books in Brookhaven, but we're not gonna let you from that, and the equal protection clause would prevent the city doing. I can have previously discussed and provided some cases to the city, including in that act, one's called Joel Murray versus Village of Washington Park, where they tried to say, you know, this ban on alcohol applies to you, but not to our previous citizens, unfortunately.
So, so the equal provision, the equal opportunity is equal protection, it is what prevents grandfathering, essentially. So you're saying, I mean, you can't take that grandfather situation because of equal protection?
You can't take that grandfather situation and expect an enforcement against it. Everybody's got his life situation, you have to be treated alike, that's the essence of the 14th Amendment.
So this, this consent agreement from DeKalb County that already gave to us, which I've seen before, but it's got a highlight here, this came out as a result of lawsuits filed by strip clubs in DeKalb County, against DeKalb County government, right?
Right.
And they signed this consent agreement, right?
That's right.
Okay, what's to prevent, say the city of Brookhaven was sued, or any other city was sued after they adopted an ordinance like this, what's to prevent that city from settling and coming up with consent agreement for something similar to this? What would be the problem with that? Because that's not grandfathering, that's just a new consent agreement based on current litigation.
Well, you're, I'm not sure, I think you maybe asked me two questions. You're saying, what's to prevent you from doing that legally?
No, no.
Or what's the problem with that? Those are two fundamentally different questions.
Both questions, what's to prevent, or what's the problem?
What is to prevent the city of Brookhaven from entering into a settlement agreement with the strip clubs?
If they're sued, if the city is sued.
If the city is sued, that says, basically, you can ignore our laws, pay us some money, we'll be an equity partner from the first trade.
Or whatever, you know, say you don't pay anybody, say you have to, you can only operate from these hours or these days, what, some other different, I mean, any agreement that a city might come up with that would benefit, you know, stop the city from having ongoing litigation, but, you know, kind of call a truce.
Legally, legally, the city would not be prevented from entering into a settlement agreement if litigation suit accepts the extent that they're prevented by general law, like 36 dash 30 dash 3A, that would purport to bind future councils. So there would be that limitation, but in general, the city of Brookhaven is gonna get sued many times on a lot of different issues over the years, and they're going to have the ability, as a young body to enter that.
As an attorney, legally, you'd say it's not good strategy to enter into a consent agreement, because you're, like you said, the 36 dash 36, 36 dash 30 dash A, it may issue from binding with subsequent councils.
Right.
But, so each subsequent council will have to adopt their own, if that's the path to determine, I'm just asking for instance, I'm not saying is it a strategy, or just asking if that's a, it's a possibility that could happen.
That's a possibility that that could happen, but what, it sort of circles back to the same problem, which is, what's good for the goose is good for the game.
Or how does it circle back, if you're not grandfathering, if you're not treating your, you're taking a problem, which is a lawsuit, and you're trying to settle it on your own terms to benefit the citizens of your city, how is that the same as grandfathering or circling back around?
Well, okay, I may have misunderstood your question. It's a little bit hard to answer that question, because I don't know what the terms of the settlement.
I don't either, I'm saying, any settlement agreement, there's no prohibition that if we adopt the new ordinance, and we get sued, that the city can't come up with a settlement agreement on, or new ordinance?
Correct.
There's no, nothing, no prohibition on that.
That's correct.
It might not be legally advisable, but it's something that could happen.
Well, no, I've settled a lot of suits. I've settled many, many suits on behalf of municipalities all over the country.
Right.
But I've done that only when there was good reason.
Right.
The ordinance was unconstitutional, we came in after someone else had drafted it years ago. Basically, the situation you've got now, where the city was sued because it was caught with its ordinances then.
Right.
Okay? And then, what happened is because, because, because the businesses had suffered some damages, maybe the business had a right to a claim for economic loss, the city was meant to pay out. Yeah, we've settled a number of suits, just not in the context where you have a constitutional ordinance.
Right.
That protects the city, and the courts have said it's constitutional.
Right, I got you, I mean, that's.
Do you happen to know, I'm a little baffled by, just, and I just, maybe it's just, I think there's a gap in my mind at the record between the time, DeKalb County passed this law that looks pretty tough, and I've reread it up recently, it's, it even bases it on DeKalb County police reports, et cetera.
Sure.
Okay. It was, obviously, clubs filed suit against it, and then I read one court ruling that basically upheld the DeKalb law, and yet, further down the road, DeKalb County caves and makes a settlement. Do you know what happens in that interim?
I can't.
It looks like the court that upheld their law.
I can't predict or explain post hoc why people did what they did, but I agree, it looks a little bit unusual. Like, I represent in Detroit, okay? These people were writing settlement checks to the strip clubs for decades, I mean, they were writing, they were getting sued right and left over their old outdated ordinances. We came in, we did a new round of ordinances, just basically overhauled the whole thing. They won in nine months on judgment on the pleadings on the constitutionality of their new licensing ordinance for sexual-oriented business. Stop writing checks to adult businesses because they had bad laws. But what you have in DeKalb County is probably, they won round one back in 2000, in one of the early cases in the federal court.
To stop it up here, babe.
You know, I think what happened was, it was war of attrition, and so you have a lot of eight or nine different clubs, all suing, and some suing in DeKalb County Superior Court, some suing in federal court, so you've got these, all these disparate cases, obviously that's not really what you have in Brookhaven, because you have one establishment, but I think what it was, is in the midst of that war of attrition, and maybe some recent rulings, and I, and here's my, looking back at it, it's my son rising, in 2002, the US Supreme Court decided City of Los Angeles versus Alamo Books, many in the industry, this settlement agreement was originally hating in 2004, and so many in the industry felt like this new, breathed new life into their ability to challenge the predicate upon which these ordinances have been adopted. And there was sort of a, you know, a rally cry, hey, this is our big chance, they've opened the door to us to challenge the ability to rely on evidence from other institutions and that stuff. Well, that was very short-lived, because the courts came out and really said, well, what that Supreme Court decision means is not that we've done away with the deference that's afforded by the government, just that there's a procedure for testing whether someone's adopted something that has no basis of support at all, which is the question in all of the books. And so I'll give you a perfect example. In 2002, Manatee County, one of my clients, loses a case at the 11th Circuit on their ordinance, because in 2000, oh, that was in 2003, in 2002, as we go to the Supreme Court case, they remanded it back down, and said, well, this intermingling US Supreme Court case, you're gonna have to send this back down and see what the trial court does with it. Well, we overhauled the code, we got an up-to-date code, and then that was upheld by the 11th Circuit. But, while there was a little bit of time where that bad decision in 2003 from the 11th Circuit, lots of new places started popping up, lots of new challenges were made, that may have something to do with it. You've got eight or nine lawsuits, and you've got this intermingling US Supreme Court decision that says, hey, I'm opening the door to broader challenges. Now, the development of the case law, primarily because of the DeKalb Grant case in 2007, and the four subsequent cases, didn't pan out the way the adult-oriented businesses had hoped, but that may be part of it. But overall, what they did was they said, we'll let you flout our laws, we'll let you ignore our laws if you pay some money.
Yep, because when you read the settlement, it clearly says, stop the lawsuits.
Right, right.
It isn't, this is the best law, or this is the best agreement, or this is in the public interest, that it's stop the lawsuits.
And frankly, the people that adopted those studies in DeKalb County, that listened to the alcohol commission, that listened to the law enforcement testimony, that documented the negative secondary effects, all of which led to the federal court upholding the alcohol ban in 2000, it very well may be that a different legislative body came into power and said, hey, we're going to, we're gonna give them a pass. Frankly, I mean, what, when you, when all barrels down, in a war of attrition, you have people who say, we're gonna give a pass to these folks and let them operate in violation of our laws, or we're not, but their situation was maybe a little bit more understandable because they had eight or nine lawsuits and an intermingling US Supreme Court. Thank you.
We got more questions?
Yeah, we're not done with you yet.
You're not done with me yet? I should've known that, I was just seeing.
The grandfather clause, does that prevent new establishments from coming in under DeKalb County's codes?
When you say grandfather clause?
The grandfather clause, as it exists today?
No, but this is a settlement agreement.
It's a settlement agreement, but their grandfathered it?
No, it's just that they have, they have a ordinance that they're agreeing not to enforce in exchange for.
Yeah, it doesn't prevent new, the settlement agreement purports not give rights to anybody that's not part of the settlement, which is one of the problems, it's like, we get our monopoly, but you can't give the benefits of this monopoly to a new sexually-oriented business that comes in.
Is that true or not? Can a new place come in?
Yes.
Yeah, because of the equal protection.
Oh, absolutely.
Being that these establishments are special use?
Yes.
It doesn't preclude another establishment coming in?
Right, right, absolutely.
Is?
Bill, do you have any questions or anything?
Thank you.
All right. So, I have a comment, I'll keep it brief, I guess we have, can I have a comment? Sure. I just don't want the public to get the impression that we're hyper-focusing on this one area. As part of our duty as a city council, one of the first things we did, if you attended the first meetings we had, was adopt ordinances, because, instead of, once I said it a hundred times on the campaign trail, people ask, well, what's the first order of business? And I would always tell folks, is to adopt code, because you can't have one minute in your operation of your city where you don't have law governing your city. So, that's what we did, we adopted a sexually-oriented business ordinance, along with 800 pages of other ordinances, dealing with, you know, zoning, planning, permitting, all that stuff. So this is just one of many. The reason that it's coming up rather soon, we'll be working on billboards pretty soon after this, because billboards is an area where we have to kind of protect our citizenry from future billboard development, possible development, and so I don't want people to feel like we're focusing on this one area, this is kind of, you know, period area, but it's part of our duty to adopt ordinances, and then go back from the beginning, and start amending, changing, improving ordinances that we've already adopted. So, this is just one of those things that we're proposing doing, is tightening up our ordinance in this area. Billboard ordinance might be next, some other zoning ordinances might be next, but we have a duty to, to make sure that our ordinances are fair and in effect, so that's what part of this discussion is about, it's not just about adult-oriented businesses. And so I don't want people to get the wrong impression that, of the city council and the mayor focusing on adult-oriented, sexual-oriented businesses, because it's not, it's just part of what we're gonna be doing over the next six months and a year.
I think it's also important to point out that while there's been a lot of discussions about a particular aspect of the sexual-oriented business, this code covers a broad scope of, you know, bookstores and device and all those types of things, so this just isn't about that aspect that we've heard a lot about tonight. You've got to realize that it's being put in place to protect the citizenry from the entire industry, not just one particular component that seems to have sort of grabbed the attention of most of us here tonight, and led to a lot of discussions about one aspect, but this is about the entire business, whether it be bookstores, or dollar entertainment, or cabarets, or peep shows, any of those things that fall under this ordinance, I just want to make it clear that we're not focusing on one particular business, but a broad category of businesses that have a number of different forms, and couldn't that come into view for Brookhaven?
I would just add too, that I think the issue is even broader than that, that as the mayor said, we are adopting code for our city, and as we come across codes that our council has advised us are flawed, possibly even unforceable or unconstitutional, and that are advising us there might be a better way to write an ordinance, we have to listen to that. I feel like we would be negligent if we went ahead and adopted codes that we knew from the get-go were potentially problematical, unforceable, failed in any way. So, in my mind, it's a matter of really looking at the best laws and the codes to protect the citizens and the interest of our community as much as anything. I'm personally kind of dismayed that we're having to spend so much time on this from the get-go, I certainly never talked about this in my campaign.
Maybe.
But it's an important issue, and if we don't do something about it, right now, we have, we're in this moratorium, which gives us at least a feeling of protection, but once that moratorium permitting goes away on the 17th, the door is open, you know, so we can either keep the gate open, or we can close the gate and put in proper protection. So, I think that's why we're deliberating on this so carefully.
Any more discussion on this? Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we table the ordinance 2013 dash 01 dash XX for the 13th, until the council meeting on the 14th, for the discussion.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor of tabling item one, 2013 dash 01 dash XX, please signify myself by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please note that item one can be tabled. Item two?
Mr. Mayor, Council, item two is approval of one-read ordinance on buildings and building regulations for the city of Brookhaven. This is the ordinance that I spoke on earlier. Originally, we had a placeholder on, had a city ordinance that we, you adopted at the initial meetings, after discussion with the county, spirit was working on transition, we all felt that it was better to go ahead and adopt their building code as our own, at least for the transition period. Now, the, this ordinance does, however, leave some powers within the county to continue to do work on our behalf, and use some of their administrative devices to do that, and we left that in purposely, because there are gonna be areas that they're gonna continue to finish out projects on, and I believe that'll be something that our new development department works with their department on, in trying to draw the line of where they're gonna draw a line, where we take over, or they do, especially on the bigger projects. And I think that'll be on a case-by-case basis, and the code that we propose to tonight continues to give the county tip of the authority to do that during the period of time of transition. But it is essentially the county's code, and if anybody was operating, the board will be fully understanding how to operate that.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move, I move we approve a one-read ordinance to adopt and approve chapter seven, buildings and building regulations for code ordinances for the city of Brookhaven.
Your second?
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor of action item two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Kind of perky, just a minute. Do we need to assign numbers to these that have Xs?
Now that you pass this one, this can be 01. We don't assign numbers, because very, I mean, the first one, so it's something that can be out of.
So that was 01?
01.
Okay.
01 dash 01.
Yes.
All right.
January 14th.
For three?
Mayor, Council, this is consideration approval of one-read ordinance to adopt and approve chapter 17, motor vehicles and traffic for code ordinances for the city of Brookhaven. This is, this is the county ordinance that has been drafted for us, just changed the names for us, we need to do that in order to go forward with our public works department.
All right, is there a motion on the floor?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, well, you gotta make a motion, you gotta say a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 2013 dash 01 dash 022, consideration approval of a one-read ordinance to adopt and approve chapter 17, motor vehicles and traffic for code ordinances for the city of Brookhaven.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of ordinance 2013 dash 01 dash 02, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Kind of perky, just a minute. Number four?
Mayor, Council, this is consideration approval of one-read ordinance to adopt and approve chapter 23, streets and sidewalks for code ordinances for the city of Brookhaven. Again, this is the county ordinance, we need to change to a city ordinance, and we are actually, we're actually having a listing of streets that exceed the streets of the city of Brookhaven, but carry streets all over the county, because it's, at a point in the future, we'll come back and actually amend it, it's ineffective to the other streets in any event, but we did not want to miss some streets that were in the city of Brookhaven, and since we have a brand-new public works department, a brand-new GIS, the, in abundance of caution, we're adopting, we're adopting a much longer list of streets that will be called out in a later time, so.
All right.
Once you pass, it's out, exceeds the jurisdiction of the city, will have no force of effect beyond the city.
All right, any motion on the floor?
I'll move that ordinance 2013 dash 01 dash 03, ordinance to adopt and approve chapter 23, streets and sidewalks for code ordinances for the city of Brookhaven. Pass.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, as far as the streets, and I don't know if it's still up, but prior to the election, during the election, the DeKalb voter registration had a list of streets and addresses on their website that went, street by street, by street, address by addresses, to, you know, the voters that were in the city of Brookhaven, I don't know if that's something we know, that it would at least cross-reference, that was out of the voter registration law, but it may have been taken down, but it was up for a period of time.
The election board gave that to me on the CD.
Yeah.
So that, well, I only have to just report.
It was on the website.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor of 2013 dash 01 dash 03, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Kind of perky, just a minute, it has passed. Number five?
Mayor, Council, business number five is consideration, approval, an ordinance to adopt and approve buildings and building regulations, and that's chapter seven, for the code ordinances for the city of Brookhaven, that is a first read, this is a two-read ordinance, we're just going to first read.
Any motion on the floor?
There needs a motion on this one, Mayor, this is first read.
Okay, number six?
Again, Mayor, this is consideration approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve chapter 17, motor vehicles and traffic for code ordinances for the city of Brookhaven, this is a first read.
All right, number seven?
Mayor, Council, this is consideration approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve chapter 23, streets and sidewalks for code ordinances for the city of Brookhaven, this is a first read.
Okay, and number seven, I think we wired both, right? Or eight, sorry, eight?
Eight, yes, this is, number eight's consideration. Eight, yes, this is, number eight's consideration approval...